Scott Levine, good to see everyone here this evening. Allow us to stand and just honor your certification and then we'll have to say the pledge.
Let's pray. Oh Lord my God, when I in awesome wonder consider all the things, the many things that thou hast made, I am thankful and grateful that for us you granted us the privilege to live, not only in a free country, but in this small town of Ridgestop. Pray God that you continue to guide and direct our board of aldermen and mayor as they discuss the matters of the city this evening. I pray that you empower them with the Holy Spirit to follow your leading in the discussion and in any votes that are taken, that your perfect will be accomplished. Pray God that you would continue to bless the soldiers that protect our country and others around the world, pray that you guard over them and watch them. Thank you Father for allowing us to live in a free country. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Governor Goff, please.
Vice Mayor Dantham.
Here.
Alderman Reasoner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
You all board members, may I flicker over the seat a minute, September 15, 2015, minutes.
I'd like to motion a question.
One second, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll motion this carry, no other issues. Scott, on to the measures. Our streets going out a little wide, might steer most of that out of the way.
Our board is responding papers. I'm taking that right. Ellen's, you'll be back in order to do the final groundwork on it. East End will be done, should be done by the end of this month. And at the same time, Bull Spring Field Highway and Nelson Road will be added to that for a cost of $55,000, given both of those ways. Pretty much out of Ellen's.
Do we have enough in this file we have before we cover that?
Yes.
Alright, let's go and place the fire, Vice Mayor Anderson.
Do the fire department first. Have a report here from Chief Reasoner. We've had three fire calls this last month, 12 medic calls, two miscellaneous calls. They were about car wrecks. Inside the city, 13 of those were inside the city, four were outside of the city for a total of 17. October 31st, we have a pancake breakfast coming up. It'll be between hours 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. And it's $5 per person. And so you get pancakes, bacon, and a drink. That's all I got for the fire department. And for the police department, I have something I need to read. It's a letter that received from Chief White, resignation letter. And I'll go ahead and read it. It's addressed to all of us up here. It says, gentlemen, I've had the great pleasure to serve the citizens of Ridgestop for the past 37 months. I have another business opportunity that I've been offered to me and Lisa, and I have spent many hours of taking, of talking and praying about this, and we feel it's the right thing to do. With that being said, I offer you and the city my notice that I will retire as chief of police and my last day of service will be, for the city, will be 23rd of October 2015. I have spoken to all except Alderman Johnson about this decision, and I appreciate the words of encouragement from each of you, and look forward to seeing you all at the October meeting. Best regards, Jeffrey A. White. And I'd like for, if it's okay at this time, to have Chief White maybe tell us of some of the things that has happened throughout this time here. Is that okay? Can we do that?
Sure. I just kind of got it outlined in a report, in my regular monthly report. I will go ahead and let you know that during the month of September, officers did an excellent job with the citation work, and our wrecks were down to one again. There was one personal injury accident that we did have, but other than that, we had one accident in the month of September, which is excellent. And it shows that they are doing a good job by slowing folks down. There was 197 state and city citations issued in 63 warnings. I also issued the notice during this past month. We are on the 2015 GHSO grant, which has just closed out. We're still waiting, eight body camps, they came in. There needed to be an upgrade, so I did not accept them. I told them, you bring them when they're, when they're right. And so I spoke to Jeff Lux at Truckers Lighthouse just the other day, and I looked for those to be in, probably in the next week. They're expecting another shipment coming in, and he said we were at the top of the line. So I will get you Jeff Lux's number, and I'll also make sure they have it off the police station. Bill Braden usually handles a lot of that 10-A video stuff, and he knows Jeff, so it'll be easy for him and Jeff to hook up on that. And it's possible they can be in by Friday. The 2016 GHSO grant for $15,000 is now signed, and the department will be ready to start spending it as soon as they get ready. I do want to tell you, over the course of the last three years, I think we've got a lot of stuff accomplished with, with y'all's help and the help of the police department and some things we were able to get. Just a list of some things, two radar units, three in-car cameras, five in-car computers, six of these PowerFlare LED units, there was three what you call quick bag PowerFlare units, 280 traffic cones, six Cobra rifles, five X-26 tasers, some of the best that they have out there now. Again, the body cameras, over $16,000 in overtime was allotted through these grants. And $22,000 in educational equipment and training for Watauga Elementary School and the Safe Routes to School Grant. This was all purchased or obtained through Governor's Highway Safety Office Grant, Department of Justice Grant, and the Safe Routes to School Grant. If you add the equipment costs along with the overtime that's been paid with these grants, that's $76,898. Now, add to that the fact, and one of the Alderman asked about the $80,000 Safe Routes to School Grant the other day. I had talked with Mike Harris about this, and he's familiar with it, the Metropolitan Area MPO. Robertson County joined that sometime within the last year or so, and as soon as they joined that, it tied us in with that. We are not on their agenda to start using that grant and T-Dot make sure that you do everything now with the MPO. It's my understanding, after talking with the lady of the state, Ms. Diane Benedict, and also talking with Howard Bradley, they will have a meeting in the December-January area. We are on the agenda for that meeting, Ridgestop is on the agenda for that meeting, and all they'll do is add us to the list of projects they're going to be doing, and at that time, the money will be ready to be released and we'll be ready to go to work. That's one of the reasons we have not started construction, because I knew that the money would not be there to, to come back to the city until this gets approved by the MPO. This type of grant, the construction grant with Safe Routes to School, that's a grant that is reimbursement. It is 100% reimbursement as long as you stay within, you know, the program. Where the educational grants, Mayor Kelly and neither one had to deal with anything as far as, we didn't have to deal with any of the money, any of the checks, or even any of the invoices. The state handled all that with education. But with construction, it will actually come through this board, and then they will be reimbursed on a quarterly event, so.
Will they notify us once they've had that January-February meeting?
I would advise that, I can give phone numbers and get you with Howard Bradley, I would advise somebody stay on top of it, just so it don't get put on the back burner and forgotten in January.
Can you forward Ms. Diane Benedict my email so that she knows to contact me, where she's sending the correspondence to you now, just send them to me.
Okay. I've got to talk to her tomorrow, so I will go ahead and give her your email at that time.
Thanks.
Also, Kelly, do you have Ms. Benedict's email information?
I will forward and copy it to all of us.
Information as well.
I will do that. But anyway, we have $80,000 there. We just got approved for the $15,000 2016 GHSO grant. So that brings, when you add all of that together, in the last three years, $171,898 in grant money that has come to the city of Ridgestop, and the only cost to the city for any equipment or anything like that was $3,174, and that was because the Department of Justice Grant was a 75-25 split, and the city had to pay 25, excuse me, 25% of the money on the ARs and the tasers. The LSO program, I think it's done very well. The city has six Glock pistols. We did have three two-and-a-half ton cargo trucks. We now have two because we sold one. We have two big utility trucks that, one's uses a snowplow and one we use to get around in the snow. We have a fuel tank, a road grader, two bulldozers, two Kawasaki 650 motorcycles, five construction floodlights, four generators, two tractor trucks, one forklift slash loader, five metal storage containers, and 21 pieces of five-by-five steel structure that can be used to erect a small storage-type building. The original value of all of this to the government was $1.7 million. I think you could easily value that property, all of it probably a little over $200,000 as it sells today. We also have a bucket truck that was obtained in 2012, just before I got here. So the LISO program has done very well in the last three years as well. I know that in the last three years, the revenue for the department has been at or above $250,000 each year from the citations and traffic scoops and things like that that we're doing. I think another huge saving with the support of this board is when we decided to go with the Volkswagen. And I believe that was one of Alderman Johnson's things, is to try the Volkswagen's. There's pluses and minuses to them. The minuses are they're really not police vehicles, but they're built really strong and they're holding up fairly well. The pluses was we cut our fuel cost in half, and probably estimate over the last two years, we'd probably save around $20,000, $17,000 to $20,000 in fuel. And then our maintenance budget went from $16,000 the first year I was here, to the next year it was like $2,000 to $3,000, and last year it wasn't much more than that. So we, the city has been able to save a whole lot of money by purchasing those vehicles, where it's probably almost paid for a car and a half, or possibly two cars. There were some things that I wanted to get done that I didn't get done. I wanted to do the accreditation, and I have a lot of that done right now, and it's on the computer. If someone has the time to pick it up and continue on with it, Ridgestop can be one of the few towns in this state that is accredited by the state, that follows all the standards that a police department should. At the moment you do that, you also receive deductions from TML on insuring the police department. So it is something that would be out there. But I've really enjoyed working here. There's a lot of great people that work for the city, and I can't say enough about the citizens of this town. Being able to go around and stop and talk to them, so much of the work of, of the police department is more proactive, is that we're trying to stop people from speeding, and we're trying to get out in the neighborhoods and make sure that someone's not breaking into houses and things like that. And I'm proud to say, and I was checking, Officer Braden does all of our Tyler's reports, I'm proud to say that that reporting is going very well, and our department's clearing about 67 or 68% of the cases that come in, which is about average for Tyler's cases, and they've done a good job with that. But I have enjoyed working here, I've enjoyed being here with you. Two more things, I got questions. Anybody have any questions about anything? And I will forward emails, and I'm going to continue to get emails about stuff, and I know I will, and I will forward those to the right person, you know, after I'm gone, and y'all name who you want to take my place. I'll make sure that they get all the different emails and things that I need. Any of you have any questions about anything?
Jeff, I got one. Have you received anything concerning the Volkswagen's?
Just, just what everybody else is hearing on the news, and nothing has come in. The only thing that still comes in is our surveys. That would probably bear someone, I don't know that now's the time to jump and say, what are you going to do about it, but I'm sure it's, it wouldn't hurt to get on the list, because these cars do fall, you know, on that. I hate that they do. They save us a bunch of money. As you well know, we were spending right at $22,000 for fuel, and the year we got these, that dropped, I think, $12,000 or $13,000 just that first year. And maintenance went from $16,000 down to like $2,000. So, I mean, they've been good for us as far as saving money for the city. It's been, it's been an excellent endeavor that we try. Might be something you'll still be able to do in the future. I will tell you this, it's going to be harder and harder to outfit those vehicles because nothing police-wise is made for a Volkswagen Passat. And to put a screen in one, they use a Crown Vic screen and a Chevy and Pala mount, and they put those together for it to go in. Well, they're not making Crown Vic screens anymore, so I don't know if the Charger screens will fit. It'd be worthwhile probably to give the folks over in Berry Hill, because I think they're still buying a few of those, so it might be worth talking to them. Do you want to know if you have any other questions? We are having our Safe Walk to School Friday morning, and we're going to meet with the kids over here at 6:40 at the Baptist Church in that parking lot. And this is the thing we do every year, it's part of the grant, and it's my last day here, and what better fitting thing for me to do than walk to school with the kids? So at Friday at 6:40, we're going to meet there. We will leave the school, I mean, the church at 6:55, walking right down the sidewalk, taking all the kids to, to school that day. So it is one of the, kind of the requirements that's needed for our Safe Walk. We'll take photos of that, and I believe Bill's, Bill, you working that day, Friday? I'll have Bill taking pictures of that, where that will go in a file, because there will come a time and a place where that will have to be shown as, you know, we are actively involved in this as a city. The only other thing I had is, I had sent everybody an email about my exit pay and everything, and heard no response. I guess everybody's okay with that? Alright. If you have no questions, I'm going to stay in the end of the meeting, okay? I'm still working the Friday, so if y'all need anything at all, don't hesitate to call me. I appreciate each one of you. Folks who are not elected officials do not know what you go through. I know because I'm elected on the Board of Education. I know the calls that you get, and I know the headaches that you have, and I know the pays are not that good. So I do appreciate the job that each of you do, and it's been fun working here. I really enjoyed working for the city of Ridgestop, so it's been good. Thank y'all.
We appreciate you, Jeff. Thank you.
I've been, I've been involved, been elected official for 25 years, and we've had 10 chiefs there. These are 10. When something's happened, every one of them, maybe they're left because they had to leave, or they left because they wanted to, or because they didn't want to go. And Jeff has become a very close friend of mine. He's the best chief we've ever had, by far. He works hard, he's a man of integrity, he's always there to help you do anything you need. He's there every morning at this school up here, at quarter seven. It's a great advocate. The kid goes in that school. It's really a sad situation in my heart to see him go. It's really sad that we have to have someone like him live here. Appreciates the way he carries himself, and very humble person, and has probably one of the best guys that I've ever grown to know. And I certainly appreciate it being here. And I've done everything possible to get him to stay, but he wanted to go out this way, so I won't say a whole lot else. But I want to share how much you meant to me, and I appreciate you being here. Let's go and plan his own, Alderman Harris. Alright, let's go to the parks, talk to the radio.
Just finished up our second Bluegrass Festival on October 3rd. Once again, it rained, clearly Genesau is, so next year we're going to look at moving into September. Thank all the vendors, made money, so it took, it turned out pretty well. As far as what the city's expenses were, the city funded $600 for the whole event, and I think we reimbursed double that back to the city, so we're right close to doubling it from the gate, so we basically was a wash, everybody. That's all right.
Let's go to utilities, Alderman Harris.
We've got the new sewer we were installing, I think we'll pop a super moving station. We went ahead and had to go ahead and remove it because of the water. We're going to be creating a new box for it, and a new lid on it. Actually, we're going for it ourselves, or the cost of needing one is just still ridiculous. They'll be watching for us to do it ourselves. The street lighting costs come up from basically $7.82 for the empty charge, and $50 for the apartment. That's an increase in our street lighting costs.
$7.82.
$7.82 for empty, $7.82 for empty, $15.82 for empty. Got two coves replaced on Highway 257, and they hit the gas line during that transition period, and we found out that we have the sinkhole, they dumped a bunch of hot nicks down in there, and it pretty much melted, they got followed down the street line, so either spelled out or to get that taken care of. So all that's done now. I'm not sure what T-Dot's going to do on the opposite portion, or on the lower one, closest to the dam, as far as fixing the road. I'm adopted T-Dot. It's pretty much just utilities, keeping, keeping pretty darn busy.
How do you reimburse for the gas line damage? Has it been repaired?
No, it was just, it's already fixed.
Okay.
It was just, they barely scratched it, but it's late in the morning. When he got in there to check the line, that's when we found out the dog has actually melted off, all the throttle protection, but he went ahead and corrected all of that, same thing. That's all.
That is. Appreciate all the hard work, that's on the streets. Let's go to finance, Alderman Johnson.
We had a prior issue, I don't have my updated reports, but what I handed to that point, all the lines are in check, so we're doing well.
City reporter.
Let me ask a question. The general has really jumped up. He went up $100,000. Yeah. I'm always amazed when I see something jump that much. How come it went up so high?
Well, you.
Can I ask that? It's the, because we received the loan money for the payback account.
Do they answer? Just curious. I love it when I see.
I got a combination, dude.
Well, back when I was, when I was doing the finances, like $1.5 million, $1.5 million, now it's $1.9 million? I think it did a job.
Working hard on it.
Hey, good. Very good.
City reporter.
Randall Hayes has called and would like to utilize the city parking lot on November the 21st for a staging area for Hometown Heroes Motorcycle Run. Barbara's going to Sheriff's Department, will be helping them, but they could use an extra officer to assist them at the time of departure. I think it coordinates with the parade in Springfield, so I just want to make sure that there weren't any problems for them staging in the parking lot. November the 21st.
That's sad enough. It's not coordinated, is it?
No. They don't coordinate.
Let me, let me ask a question. If we've got to have, let me think how the word is, if we have to have special insurance policies for people to use our building over here to park, does this group have to have a special insurance policy to use our parking lot? I mean, I'm all for them using it, I'm just curious.
All they're doing is pulling in and parking until they get re-pulled back out on the highway to hit this Springfield. They're actually just, they're just pulling in, parking, just like anybody else would park in a parking lot. They're just going to pull out and.
Just wanted to know. I'm all for them doing it.
Okay. Ms. Ann May with Highland Chapel Church called this week, and during our conversation, she and I both spoke with Cora Lee Holloway at THDA about Ms. Edith Grant's property on Holland Avenue. Several years back, she was part of the rehabilitation program that they had, it was a rehab program, and Ms. Edith received a new home through the project. THDA has agreed, and I have a written memo, they've agreed to release the payback of that property, and allow the city to release the deed of trust, is what I'm trying to say. And what I'm going to, would like to ask the board to do is to vote tonight to release that deed of trust back to Ms. Edith's estate. And then at that time, they can look forward to provide a guess for estate with that. But I have it in writing where the THDA has written saying that they will write it off, and that we have the authority to release that deed of trust. So sometime further.
I got it first, I got it in due diligence.
Right, thank you. And the only other thing I have, and Mike may have touched on it, I was making notes, but he received a safety inspection evaluation from the TRA earlier in the month, and we were very pleased whenever we got him. They closed out several of his old violations, and there were very few minor violations that were found in his report. So we were excited about that TRA report. Perry Bradley.
Good job. Congratulations, buddy. Congratulations, Heidi. Now, it's going to mayor's comments. Going, I think basically with Chief White was talking about a minute ago, I've heard that Volkswagen may be replacing a lot of those cars with you, so I don't know how true that would be, but I have heard that from Volkswagen, the dealers themselves, so might be a possibility. That's all I have, is go to OBD and call business and bring up the Dean Krugman property.
Received an email from Mr. Dink this past week. He's gotten a bid from R&amp;M Electric, $3,200 to move the utility pole for the sewer drip station in front of Watauga. What he is requesting is, I don't have, I had a copy of it, the city pay that, to have the pole moved, and.
You want copies of the other truck?
Yeah. I left them in the other truck. But he's basically broke down his permit fees of what potentially could be building over there, and how the cost could be offset. Might do with this. Of course, I spoke with Keith and Mike as far as utilities. The only issue we have is if we're setting a precedent for this to happen again. If we've got a sewer main running across the Mike's property, is this going to come back on us to move the sewer line? on us to move the sewer line at our cost because it's put in on Rodway 10 years ago or ninety-seven when sewer comes through, that's our only?
We had utility, we had utility for the sewer, utility for the water, also utility for the existing electrical overhead lines. And I believe that's in the E.S.O. It is.
Yeah, he's met with, actually met with the E.S., like two Fridays, last Friday, and they have no problem with moving it, it's just a matter of whether we want to pay the cost. Dink, you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, I mean, the bid, they'll move the pole, they'll rerun the line underground to the city, black pole and lights down there, they'll move that. They've, they'll cut it over, it should be down over a half an hour. Jim Sedet said that should not be a problem, I've called to him. They'll have the one service ready and hot before they hook it up, so there shouldn't be no problem with the downtime, everything the city has hooked up will be hooked back up. At the last meeting, the big cost were, we were hearing around fifty-nine hundred dollars, so this bid's thirty-two hundred firm and the city will recoup that very quickly and more than that. And if for some unforeseen reason that we do not build a home over there, we'll repay the city thirty-two hundred dollars, so the city's not having that. Would like to try to get it going before winter, so that when spring comes, we're not dealing with this kind of issue with construction.
We, the pole was located on the east end and when the state turned around and sold the land to you, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that easily goes with the property.
I haven't seen it written easily anywhere, but you may have one. It's not an R.D.
No, no, even if it's not written down, it's the state with the property, those are the property. That's actually been proven by two different courts. So what you're doing is, you were told or informed ahead of time before you put the driveway in there that we were not going to ever, not move that pole.
No, I never talked to you before that, sir.
No, no, you never talked to me, you talked to...
No, and I asked for your number and I called you three times so we could talk directly and you never returned a call, all due respect. I wanted to talk to you one-on-one so we understood each other. You never returned a call three times, so I had to go to someone else. And I've yet to speak to you one-on-one regarding this. And all due respect, that may be your job, I tried to reach out to you and did not get the courtesy of returning a call. So we could talk one-on-one, so there was no, that he said, she said, or any of that, we wanted to talk directly, that's the only way to deal with things like this. That's why I tried to reach out and I've tried to do the right things.
Well, and he was, he single-handedly tackled the Barwood project and I, as I explained, and it was more than anybody in this room would have ever comprehended, including myself, that's why I had to...
Called saying I'm busy, I'll get back to you, you know, in one minute.
Yeah, and I, and I pulled him, we talked, so that, I mean, like I said, whether that was relayed or not, the city had a right of way. You know, the only issue is, are you setting a precedent? That's the only issue I've got, if we do it for one, we're going to have to do it for all. With Vernon's before.
Yeah, I mean, how many other cases like this could there be? I mean, is there a reason the driveway, I think the pole's only done what, a foot and a half or so right into your driveway?
They want to bring it more in, it's because of the delay in the lane, the way the driveway has to go in because of what the county's doing there with the scoop system. And you come down, you come up further, you come up the steep hill, you've got to cut into the bank, you've got more utility lines there, and then you have a steeper driving. This is the way that the excavators and builders have said, isn't the best way to bring it in, go around the retention pond that the county's building and so forth, that's the reason. And so, one, it will be up to code after they, two, it's an ice source, but you can't expand out any further, so you want people driving in a driveway right by a utility pole, it's not a good situation.
Let me ask you a question, Andrew. Are you building or someone else planning on building that?
No, it's us.
If you're possibly going to build there, you say so.
That's what we're planning, then yes, we look everything up.
What I'm reading here is a price of value of a house of three hundred fifty thousand, the city will be reimbursed twenty-eight hundred dollars in fees plus...
The building permit fees, the other most heavily.
Plus the permit fee of thirty-two hundred, plus sewer tax of thirty-two hundred. It's kind of like almost that we're benefiting ourselves to do it.
And then you have a lot of sure...
I think I understood you earlier saying if you didn't build a house, then you would reimburse us.
Yes. Are you going to live in the home? Yes. Yeah, it's not for, built for safety, it's personal business.
I make a motion to move it and the city pay for it.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You in favor of mine? Everybody else in favor?
I'd be willing to work, I don't see where it's our responsibility at this point. Like I said, we've looked at sewer lines all over this city since it's been brought up. I think we're opening the door after, after he showed me where all our sewer lines are, it's the only issue I've got. I didn't realize our sewer line stretched all over, so like I said, we do it for one, we're going to...
The way it sits right now, the driveway's going through the pole, where in the driveway is the pole?
In the middle of the driveway.
Left corner or third or something like that. But if it's moved, you can come out further to the left on the property and make it a move and transition.
I can't think of anywhere else in town to have a problem like this.
We've got sewer line in front of all of our property, I'm not asking you to move that.
Anywhere else in town to have a problem like this?
Not with the driveway, but you built it all along.
I can't.
It's our only drip station in the city, so we're not going to have it anywhere, and that's before it goes to the metro. I wasn't referring to the drip station, I was referring to the sewer lines that are crisscrossing across the city. We got into that on Barwood with all the sewer lines, I'm going to...
Do you think we might run it? Do you have it staked out there now where the driveway would be and how it's going to go right kind of through the pole, is there any little flags out there, anything?
You get a good idea, it was walking up there, there was some dirt, but we like to bring it up.
Don't know if it can fit in there? How wide is your property at that point and how long it might be? Do you understand that life span, something like a year or seven?
No, it runs all the way from just about where utility line, about twenty, twenty-five feet from utility line, all the way back along south Highway 41, about here. But as you go down the highway, you're getting up to a steeper grade, you've got to start cutting into, then you might run into sewer lines that may have, we may have to move the cost of all that stuff. Where it is now, hopefully, a driveway will not be cut down very hard, very deep up there because it's old road anyway.
I'm going to ask for all the poles.
Do you want a roll call?
They have a roll call.
Peter Danton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Alman Reasner?
No.
Alman Harris?
No.
Alman Johnson?
We've got three no's and two yes, so what's our next alternative? If I would get down, so...
Can I, can I ask?
If I go to the turkeys in the next alternative, well, we can, that'd be good.
Can I ask you to get a difference type of bid, break it down in labor, and one in labor and then one in the parts material?
And what, I'm just asking what difference would that mean? He's got all the materials and parts in here, it's over twenty-six hundred dollars less than the one we had before the last meeting, which was fifty, almost fifty-nine hundred dollars. And in this bid here, he's saying it's all parts, materials, permits and everything. I mean, I can ask him to break it down, it'd make a difference, but I'm not sure, I'm trying to follow the reason that you're talking here.
I'm just looking at a different approach, and I'd like to see it broken down, labor versus material.
We can, certainly can ask him for that.
Look, if we had an example, if half of it was light and half was material, what would that mean? I think that's what you're wanting.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to go back to...
Let's assign out this, twenty-one hundred, let's say that a thousand of it is material, the rest light, or what would we wanted to do at that time?
It gives me another option to consider.
What, what would that option be? Rest of it material or...
If that's possible, something like, something like that.
What if we, what if we...
My, where I've got my issue is, we're looking, or being asked to spend thirty-two hundred dollars of taxpayers' money to move a pole for somebody's driveway, I'm just trying to come up with another workaround. That's where my hand goes.
You do understand the city's going to make money for years to come, all these, or you're looking at short term or long term? And short term costs will be covered upfront and we guarantee if we did not offer some funds for some reason to build that, they'll pay the city back the whole thirty-two hundred. And the city would have a utility pole up the coast now, a little closer to the building for now. I understand. I hope so.
Plus, the only thing is this utility pole is servicing, yes.
The sewer drill being the line stand, that's why I...
That's not his problem, he bought the property from the state and the state didn't do anything for us, that's basically what it amounts to. We're getting held hell with the deal, but I don't see that as Mr. Reverend's problem. I mean, realistically, the state ought to be paying, but we know that ain't going to happen, so. He's looking at investing almost six thousand dollars in property fees and, I mean, taxes, I mean, building permit fees and tax and everything else, plus ongoing sewer costs and everything else he looks up to, natural gas, and he's offered to pay us back? I don't know how you can get more fair than that to all the community. I don't think anybody's ever offered to pay us back, so...
If he doesn't.
See, we're not asking the city to get, be out of anything.
But every, every house in the subdivision, one hundred percent of those permits are going to pay for our roads on Barwood that we just paid for. How, how should this be held different? We're using your entire building permit to pay for this, I'm not...
What road are you going to maintain for us of those fees? You don't have to, it comes off Highway 41, the state maintains it, the rest of the driveway, there's no roads or anything, so...
I live on State Road, Dave.
I'm just saying, I mean, it's not like I'm going to ask you, you do this stuff in subdivisions and things all over and that permit fee doesn't cover all that for each time, so...
Look, I said, my issue is, if we do it for you, we've got to do it for everybody else.
And I'm right, I mean...
It's been there twenty years, if it was just put there and we screwed up, I wouldn't mind moving it, I wouldn't.
Well, I didn't screw it up either, that's why I'm trying to work with the city and state here. But listen, you know what, I don't need any else from you, me and myself, we're good, we need nothing to move on, you've already, you know, we can talk later, one-on-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to O-Business, I've been census on Tennessee Development District.
I guess you were sawed a letter, you signed, sent to the state, the census, special census. We had to have a development district to come up and do a field test to make sure all the information's great when we did the census, and of course, middle Tennessee does not have a development district, so we had to go to one of the other seven areas of the state that does. And I called the one in Martin, Tennessee, they did not do it, I called Jackson, Tennessee, and I called Coopole, Tennessee. I got two prices, Coopole, Tennessee was eighty-five hundred dollars and Jackson, Tennessee was three thousand dollars for them to satisfy. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Southwest Tennessee Development District, Jackson, Tennessee, to come and approve, once we do the census, approve our information. And they will help coordinate that and get it all sent into the state.
I'll say.
What's the fee on that?
Three thousand. Versus, I had one for eighty-five hundred and then accepted it for three thousand.
Okay, you got a motion? Who made the motion?
I made a motion. I'll say. I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's going to be ordinance number 2015-109, site plan requirement.
What this pertains to is Section 3.120, site plan requirements, so we're just adding the census in here as far as additional requirements, which would be a digital PDF or PDFA-formatted proposal under a plaque with layers intact, you sent the email or submitted on USB stick to the city court clerk. We're asking for that as well as the normal plans and plaques, so we can start creating the database with all this information on it. For us to copy all of this after the fact is extremely expensive, and so that's what this is all about.
So this actually goes wire for us?
Electronic copy.
Yes, electronic, electronic copy, as you said.
Right, electronic copy.
You know, I think that we're, we're pretty relaxed in our, in some of the other requirements in this, as well, I wrote down a couple here, which one, let me cut. I think that when we ask that the minimum scale being one inch equals one hundred feet, if you had a piece of property that's one hundred feet by two hundred feet, you have a site plan that's the size of a business card. I think that maybe we'd be working in there that's a little different, maybe the contours, maybe also some, we're kind of giving the one or two family dwellings a little bit of a lesser requirement, which is normal, but I'm saying that the commercial properties that we have, I think need to have enough detail with spot elevations and maybe one foot contours, a little five foot contours, sometimes you have this property, when you have a contour on it, it would have three foot of all, it's very important for us to make sure curb and gutter and upon your review and that, you know, your department, the painting department, they'll even review the plans properly, so I thought I would at least give you my thoughts on that for your consideration.
That's a good one.
Just for your consideration.
Yeah, really.
Thank you.
Especially with the high grass and...
Is that a normal scale that most cities use or is that just nice people that they have up there?
That's what this has been all along, that's what Art would have meant to say, all the time we do that, so it's too old.
And since you're adding it, this is one that all cities need, you need to have this on, some kind of electronic copy, you know, you need to have it.
So are you making a motion to change all of this for electronic copy? Is that what you're going?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We're starting those changes inbound?
Well, not yet.
No, no, we'll, we'll come back.
There's somebody that just said...
Second reading. Got a motion, we're just second.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. You keep it, you're certain.
It's going to be ordinance number 2015-110, rezoning parcel. This is an artist, a man, artist number ninety-five thirty-four, known as the Reach Stop, the ordinance official zoning map of the city of Reach Stop, Tennessee, rezoning parcel thirty-three point zero zero. As shown on Robinson County Property Map thirteen to one thirty-two L, Route A, consisting of one point four seven acres, located at eighteen sixty-eight Old Springfield Highway from R1A, low density residential agricultural to R1, low density residential. And this is the property of an ex-tenant, this is Mr. Rogers' property.
Yes, next to Trump.
Yes, next to Trump. Garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the first reading, also be up to us here before the next reading, next month. What's the reason behind this, putting up the flags?
Mr. Governor, could you please inform the board on your reasoning for this?
Well, so I could look up the...
This is, uh, Mr. Rogers' property.
Yes, next to the front.
Yes, next to the front.
Garage.
Yeah.
This is the first reading, also be up to us here before the next reading, the next month. What's the reason, I just put it in the files?
Mr. Burden, the president.
Yeah.
Could you please, uh, inform the board on your reasoning for this?
Well, so I could hook up the sewer and use the, I've got a one-bedroom apartment upstairs. And I just wanna make it where I can use that.
Over a garage?
Yes, sir.
Detached garage?
Uh-huh.
Do, do we allow that?
There's, this has been.
They've worked it out through the planning commission for quite a while, it sounds like, trying to take care of this, you know, back here.
Well, no, it hasn't been worked out as far as that goes. What's been worked out is the planning commission went through and saw that, you know, make sure that it was gonna conform with our expansion ideas.
Is it two lots or one lot?
Right now it's one lot, but it's gonna be two lots, that's why I'm going through them.
If I remember correctly, it was, the permit was pulled for a garage.
It was pulled for a garage, uh, specifically for a garage, it was inspected for a garage and, uh, that was the only permit that was pulled. He had since then put in, uh, air conditioning, uh, actually the sewer was running out into two fifty-pack or two trash cans sitting in the yard. He put in water, he put in electric, uh, and he has stated on their notes that he changed it over to a dwelling unit. None of this was, no building permits were pulled for any of this.
No inspections?
No inspections, no. The slab for a dwelling is, uh, is a different inspection than the slab for a garage. It'd be, it's a lot of issue pertaining to this and, uh, due to Robertson County Health Department being involved concerning the two trash cans being used for the sewage, Mr. Burden went ahead and filed for a, uh, a permit in order to put a sewage in, and that permit, I denied that permit, uh, under the circumstances. First off, you can't have two dwellings on one parcel. Everything that was involved, uh, nothing was permitted, uh, so we have, we had no inspections on it at all, except for the garage itself. And, uh, that's why we're attempting this. I gave you two options, either remove the apartment from the upstairs garage, or as possibly gets a rezoning.
So, cause I have to work with, so.
Now, is it?
We'll have to work with the basic label, as we're per se.
He's trying to make a deal.
You have a demising line, so you're trying to subdivide that property at this time, that new property line, is that what I'm seeing on the line?
Yeah, he's trying to subdivide it, what he's trying to do, into a smaller lot.
No, I tell you, I've had, I've had a little bit of experience with this in other counties. And what they require is to have some inspections made on your property by a, to have a general contractor say that, that it's okay, and then to have that general contractor have the plumbing saying it's okay. Usually it requires maybe an engineer to look at it and for them to give their letter. And it's just a, a little bit of.
Well, I'm a contractor, I've been building houses since, um, got out of high school.
Okay.
That's all I know.
Well, that, you may be able to write that letter, but, but I'm just telling you.
But I'll be there.
Other cities have a structural engineer look, because, I mean, was a foundation inspection, uh?
Yeah, the, the slab was inspected by Sean Diggs, our building inspector at that time, for a hit garage, for a detached garage, and that's it. There was no other inspections done as far as plumbing, as far as anything else. Monetary electrical, the electrical lab had to be inspected, because a lot they want to get, to get a meter from any of us. Of course, the state does that, it'll come through us. But it's still gonna model it, it's like, uh, before it's done.
How, how do we fix this without them building a house on the property? And then it, then call it a detached garage, I don't see how we can fix this with, uh, it being a garage.
But it might be a house that gets built and then actually attach it with a walkway, which we permitted, you know?
And I can see that.
And then that could even have a, a bathroom and everything above.
But the, and the way it is now, I don't see how we.
Well, it's kind of the reverse way to go about it, you know, going through the back doors of the front, basically. It's, it's not a typical way to do.
Mr. Burke, can I ask you a question? Did you build the garage or sell?
Yes, I did.
And you decided to build a, a place outside the stair?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm pretty much, you know, maybe where I could put a, a little apartment up there. We, we needed to move and, um, so it worked out good just to try to make a little apartment out of that until we could find another house.
Are you living there now?
No.
What did you, I mean, I guess my biggest concern is, you know, I think myself, I try to work with anybody, to be any way I can to help them, but at the same time, I wanna do it right. What did you plan on doing with the sewer?
Well, you know, I, I really was a kind of a temporary situation and now I'm ready to, to make the permit and make it right, you know? So, it's something that came up quick and it was a.
I guess my question is, you know, with you being a builder, I'm sure you're a good builder, I can't imagine just running a sewer line out and do a couple trash cans.
Well, like I say, it was something that came up and it was gonna be a temporary little deal and anyway, I'm, I'm just wanting to make it right.
What you said, y'all living there when you were in between houses, was the reasoning for wanting to make this permanent now that you've, I, I take it you've got another house and moved out, or was?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's got a little apartment and, you know, sometimes our church will need some, a place to put somebody up or, you know, down the road if I wanna, you know, use it as a dwelling, just one bedroom dwelling, it would be, you know, legal. You know, I keep the property up, it's not a.
Yeah, it's a nice looking place, I know where it's at. And I guess, I guess my main concern with you being a builder, why you would put two trash cans in the ground and run a sewer?
Well, it, it happened kind of quickly, you know, and then, anyway. I apologize, but I'm trying to make it right.
I can, I can see his request, if, if he's willing to show us at some time, or when he comes, comes back, he's gonna build a house to attach to. But the way it stands now, I, I just can't see that. Cause then we've got a garage that's a rental property.
Does it, how do you get to the area you're living in, is it a staircase or something in the back?
Yes, when you, when you go into it, there's a, there's a stairway in the back.
Inside the garage or outside?
Inside the garage, yeah, inside. So it's well done, I'll, I'll do it that way.
My main concern is why, you know, you're, you're a contractor and everything, and why you built it, uh, the way you did without pulling any permits and turned it into a dwelling without pulling any permits whatsoever. And then the sewer portion of it, that just blows it all out of, out of whack.
If anybody wants to come over there and look at what I've done, it's, it's, it's sound.
Well, it's gonna be, you know, everybody has to pull permits in order to do that, uh, you know, inspect. Uh, because having a garage below a dwelling, there's a lot of life safety codes that are involved with it. Uh, different types of ceilings, the whole ball of wax in order to protect the occupants from that garage. Okay, it happens.
It's got, it's got metal, metal ceiling in the, in the, between the units?
Well, you see, we don't.
I'll be glad to show it to you, I'm just trying. I'm, I'm just at your mercy, I'm trying to make it right. Can you, can you mind if I want to come look at it and inspect it?
At some point are you gonna build a house on that property if you split the property?
I mean, what's, what's theirs yet? What's, what's theirs yet? It's an acre and a half and, you know, the houses are on either side of it. The, the original house is to one side and it may, where you could do something on the other side without making a, you know, being a problem. It's an acre and a half and it's, and they're both on, centered on it, so it's not, you know. You can look at the plans and it's not, you know, that place or anything.
No one's living in there now?
No.
Have you talked to anybody about putting a sewer system in? Is that what he's doing?
Buying?
Didn't you talk to anybody?
Have we, have you, have you contacted?
I've already, I've already set a tank that y'all use for your sewer system.
Step system, top side.
Yes, and all I need to do is, is put the pump in and hook it to the sewer. But I just need to get approved for it.
So you've already set the tank, and I specifically told you you cannot set the tank until all this is taken care of?
I set the tank where I could at least flush the commode in there. You know, you told me to take the other out and I had to put something in, at least where I could use the bathroom.
No one's living in there, though?
No.
Did you just go to?
Yeah, I've got, I actually, I've got a, a kitchen down there. Just got a commercial oven and mixer, and a lot of times I make bread and give it to, uh, some, a lot of the people in our church. And, uh, anyway, so, I'm not helping hurt the community, you know?
Okay, so right now you've got a, a step system, top tank in the ground like we require.
Exactly.
Have you contacted Jim Sannett or?
Well, I tried to, I tried to call Mike and ask him, you know, what I need to do and did not get any answers back, calling him two times. Left the message. You know, I, I talked to he, he got his number, and called him.
Well, I'm, with, with the way it is now, I, I just can't go for that if, if a house is being built on the property to, I can see this request if a house is being built and added to this garage, but as is, I, I make a motion to.
You know, all the properties on that street are zoned that, what I'm asking to be zoned.
Well, I understand that.
And the, and the house is solid and anybody that wants to inspect it can inspect it. And there is enough room on the property to have two dwellings. So everything lines up, you know? You know, I, I made the statement not pulling permits. I didn't think it would be that big of a deal to have a little apartment up there where I can stay for a while. So I, I'm, I'm sorry.
This kitchen that you have, it sounds like it's a little bit almost commercial.
Well, it, I got a good deal, a couple of convection ovens and a mixer, so I make a lot of bread and then I, I give it away to, to whoever. You know, I got church members and his friends, I, I enjoy making bread. I made about three hundred fifty cookies for Josh's movie one night in there, so, I'm not, I'm not really a bad guy.
Uh, nobody up here is saying that you're, I'm just saying, I can, I can go along with a request if, if there's a house being built on the property, but with a garage or an apartment, then.
Well, what's the difference?
Because.
I mean, it's a dwelling, it's, it's walls, bathroom, roof, you know, I'm just trying to hook up a sewer where I can use it.
I, I guess my vision's a little different, and I just don't look for a garage dwelling to be built with, with a reach top, I'm sorry.
Well, I made it look like a house, you just show me what to do. I mean, it's got all the same features, you know, as a house, it's not, it's not tacky, I'm not, you know?
So our main issue is just a dwelling above, as far as the garage, since they're all the same property, that's about the issue, is just dwelling above the garage.
Well, it, it's going through the rezoning process. So that it can be sent back into a small lot. It has to be, the way our regulations are, it has to be rezoned first. And then he'll come back to the planning commission, uh, asking to split the lot, because it's all one lot right now. Cause the way it is, he's got two little dwellings on one property, which we don't allow.
Whether people just from garage, that's what it's called. And my understanding is, as far as the, the plumbing he's talking about flushing, none of that, no, nothing was inspected before it's covered up, right? There's no permits pulled for any plumbing, so we don't.
Do you have another piece of property on there now that you're living in, or somebody's living there?
Yes, it's a house next door that I'm renting. But all the houses on that street are zoned the same and the property is, you know, is big enough to handle it, be, you know, split and rezoned. That's the only piece of property left that's got like an agriculture, that would be like.
I mean, this plaque is showing it already sent back, but it's all a one-piece property.
Right.
I, you know, I, I, I try to find a reason to help somebody any way I can, but I don't know how to do this. It probably lies to go for the Board of Appeals. Because I don't think legally by us being the sole and officials to oblige the ordinances that were required to, that we can, we can vote on this.
You just tell me what I need to do.
I'm, I'm suggesting that you, you probably, you don't have to go to the Board of Appeals. Due to the fact that it's kind of out of our hands, cause, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be hard to deal with the difficult, but we can't vote on this because it's, it's not anywhere in ordinance.
Well, the, the problem with the Board of Appeals.
The condition.
They can only do, it's either gotta be a hardship on the property, which it's not, or a, uh, special. Special exception, which it doesn't make either one.
They could, they could do a special exception, and some of the Board of Appeals would make that decision. That's what you would require, would be to take special exception to the Board of Appeals. That's the only way I can see you can get it passed like this. I'm not, I, I, I was very familiar with the planning board and, and before a lot of events over the years, but I, I don't, I can't recall all the requirements, ways of requirements, lot size, you know?
The lot size going to R one A does conform.
Does conform, as far as the way you got it written out.
Yeah.
So what?
Uh, but it's, it's R one A going to R one A, okay? So the lot size does conform if he's on city sewer.
Okay.
Uh, and it's not going to interfere with our growth plan for that area as far as going commercial later on down the road. Okay, because of the, so, so all it has now is gonna interfere with it. That's one of the things that we were, uh, going to the plan and zoning, uh, pertaining to, it's just all the other stuff that's involved with it here. They can't have a dwell, two dwellings on the same property.
I know, I know.
Well, that's why you told me to split it, that's what I did.
Yeah, I gave him two options, I said.
Right, right.
You know, either try and get rezoned, okay, or, cause at that point in time when, uh, when, when.
You were up there.
Okay, when you come up there and hit me that way, at that point in time, I told you to, you had two options, either get it, try and get it rezoned, was one of them, or redo the apartment, because you can't have two dwellings on the same property. And now you're trying to get it rezoned, and that's what we're having the, the, the problem right now.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Aren't there two options, or two issues? Asking for a rezoning, according to this ordinance, is Jeff just asking for a rezoning, he's not asking to split it. That'd be a second, the second step.
Reszone it first.
Yeah, okay, I just want to be clear. Because this wouldn't come before the Fields Board to rezon.
Well, that's what you would have to do. Probably, I mean, that's all the way you get there.
If he was gonna use that for something.
Correct.
But just, just the fact of rezoning R one A to R one.
You don't have to do that, no.
No.
But as far as him to be in contempt of the city, that's what he has to do, as far as using.
I understand, I just, I think it's two steps.
It is.
But no need to go to the first one if you're not, you know, understand. I just want to be, to be clear on that.
I'd be honest with you, I don't think I've ever been in this situation before. I, I don't remember anything like this ever happening, but, uh, the first thing we need to do, the motion's on the table, I'll. First thing we need to do, the motion's on the table on passing this, which is ordinance two thousand fifteen one ten, ordinance rezoning partial, the motion's on the board for McCall. Make the motion.
What was the motion he?
He turned it down, he voted down.
As is, I make a motion to not rezonate.
Anybody else say?
I'll say.
Do I count a vote?
Mayor Denver?
No.
Alvin Reeser?
No, no, until, a little more research.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass. I, I don't know, I'm really voting on it, but, I mean, I know not to rezonate, but I'm just gonna pass on it right now, time, no more.
Alvin Harris?
No.
And Alvin Johnson?
No.
I, I'd be willing to help you try to put this thing together if there's any way to do it, but you're, you're gonna have to bring it before the Board of Appeals.
That's fine, that's fine.
And if you'll explain to them your situation and what you're trying to do with your sewer system and you're trying to make it correct, I mean, it might go through.
Okay.
I'm not trying, we're not trying to be difficult up here, I just don't want to vote on anything that I notice that, you know, that's not correct.
But if we don't rezonate here, there's no sense in them going to the appellate board.
Correct.
That's correct.
What would have to be done, Mike, from where the dwelling down and I understand you got a pole in there, bathroom or whatever? What would, what would, you're saying to take the, the dwelling, the living quarters out of, what would have to be done to do that? I mean, we're not asking to rip the floors out and stuff, are we? I mean, what, how could you convert that to storage and not, not living space?
The way the codes looks at it, if you have a kitchen in there, it's a dwelling. You take the kitchen out, completely out, it's no longer a dwelling.
But you'd still have a restroom, you'd still have a restroom?
Still have a restroom, yeah, you can have a restroom in any garage. You just cannot have a kitchen. Once you put a kitchen in there, the encode classifies it as a dwelling.
So you can't have a refrigerator in your garage?
You can have a refrigerator, you can't have a kitchen. You can't have an oven, you can't have a kitchen.
What we just voted on was not to allow him to go from a, what is it, R one A to.
R one.
And everybody else on the street is R one, is that?
R one. R one.
So he must go from R one A to R one, oh, okay.
Which is advancing.
Like I said, I, I proved him because I didn't know enough about it, so, okay.
That's true. So I guess that parcel's gonna be different from everything down the street, you know? Everything else can, can be split and you can put a house on three quarters of an acre, but I can't do that.
Like I said, I would change my mind if you go build a house on that property. It's gonna be attached or somewhat of that garage and a house, a normal one, then I'll rezonate.
I'll work with you and I'll make it whatever you want me to make it.
Okay, a detached garage and you're gonna build a house, then I got my property rezoned.
What do you think is there now, is walls, a meter, a kitchen? Come look at it. You know, I, I built a nice home and struggling in there, you know, and I, you know, I don't do anything careful.
I, I, I don't want to do that.
Well, I mean, it's.
There's restrictions in that subdivision, you have to build a certain, all right, but that's just not normal to build a garage and then, then put.
Well, I mean, let's get inside of the box, what is it? You need to come look at it, you know, I mean, you need to come look at it, I mean, it's.
I'm doing it.
You know, anyway.
I know myself, I'd be willing to help you any way we could to get it straightened out, I just gotta figure out how to do it. And, and right now, I can't. I can't do it because, quite frankly, I don't know how.
I got you, I got you.
And I'm not trying to be hard on you because I don't want you to see you stuck with a piece of property you can't reuse.
Yeah.
And we just need to come up with some kind of way to get it fixed.
Yeah.
I know, I feel that way and I, and I hope the other board members do.
Yeah.
If he removed the kitchen, then we could go back and visit the separate tank system.
We'll get everything, break the kitchen. As long as the kitchen's open. Not a problem, man, the kitchen can be put back in there. And of course, you'll have to get all the inspections, all the required inspection, not a problem.
Let's go to the Christmas party, maybe some chair, everybody up a little better here.
Obviously, we had ours last year and it was, I think halfway through January, so a couple of my board members asked if we're gonna do that again. So I had Ms. Kelly send out an email to ask for requests and, uh, of what everybody wanted to do and I know Mike talked to his board, I've talked to mine, everybody enjoyed what we did last year, uh, so that's kind of what's on the table was to do that again. I've already talked to the Smilys and the Reasoners and they have no problem letting us use the building again. It's just a matter of us doing it, set the date, if that's what we choose to do.
I enjoyed the rest of it, last year was awesome. I had a lot of, a lot of people comment around, on how much they enjoyed it.
Uh, are we gonna try to do it before Christmas or after New Year's or? We're gonna rename it the?
New Year's.
New Year's party.
The after Christmas post.
Well, it was the first time we've ever had our volunteer boards, uh, involved in this since, from what I understood, years ago. I know with our board, we volunteered a lot of hours for our Christmas parade and Bluegrass Festival, Easter egg hunting, just a thank you and obviously one of the ways we can keep our costs down like we did last year, fed, what, sixty people or whatever for five hundred dollars or something like that. Thank you. Had a lot of response, everybody enjoyed it, so, just flat on doing that again unless I'm not, I just do something to do, just try to get it going.
I'm good with that because it makes things for everybody to be around, talk and everybody to do this and have conversations, so I'm.
Interaction that normally you wouldn't have if you were in a more formal setting.
I'm good with it. Any questions on it?
I don't guess, do with it, Kelly? We'll just get together and set a date, uh, nobody else got any ideas, we'll get together and set a date and get that all the boards.
I'd wanted to promise this last time in town.
I'm glad you got it.
I know, man. People may split it.
I shared my prize last night.
It's going to the schedule, schedule workshop, right?
I guess they're not gonna have to.
For a thought.
What are you saying, what's your schedule workshop?
I'm good with the rest of the block though.
Oh, sorry. I'm like October, well.
There's still time.
Well, we gonna do it, can we do it today before, I mean?
The sixteenth.
One bad problem that I have right now, that's one of a lot of my meetings are, is all my meetings, I never know when they're gonna call me and, I, I had to miss last night's meeting and, uh.
Well, I mean, something, I don't know if we're gonna have anything come up, I mean, with paving, this will be done at any time, so.
Well, if possible, if I can't be there, uh, Mike can talk while I'm, uh, wait driving or something.
Any citizens coming in? Y'all sat here a long time, anybody wanna say anything?
Would guys, I'd like, can you guys vote, can you guys vote?
They just. Need a motion to accept the, uh, date of trust on this state of Heath Grant, which, uh, release the CD for him.
I'll say.
On Thursday, I.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, Kelly. Any citizens coming in?
I'd like to address the, uh, problem with the trees overhanging the roofs around here that need to be trimmed. That, uh, they're sticking out far enough now where they're starting to hit the cars when people are driving down the road. As far as the vertical clearance and the ones on the side of the road. In specific, Living Good Road and Lake Road.
Living Good and Lake Road?
Do what now?
Living Good and Lake.
Living Good and Lake, they, the trees need to be trimmed.
Sir, for her notes, your name, where you live?
Josh Meredith, and eighteen forty-four, Old Springfield, Allen.
I'll take your question, uh.
Sorry, resident twenty-one fifty-three Living Good Road, Jane Pettigo, and I'm in support also with the tree trimming. Um, I'm directly affected being in the, the sharp curve of Living Good, just purchased a house. And, um, all of those trees are overhanging the roof quite a bit for us to turn into the driveway and they're actually on the east windward for the city of Georgetown, so.
Uh, back here in the summer, I talked to Tommy Maitland to see if we could work out something since we're sister cities, if you'll call it that. He checked with the board, the Mayor Alderman, they would not allow it to try to do some kind of compensation. I don't know what it violates, but they wouldn't do it. I have talked to Terry Wilk to see in my equipment, trying to find a used machine. City of Greenboro just purchased a brand new John Deere with a side boom, which is what we would need to get up and out, uh, and that's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We struggled at eight, two hundred and eighty-nine on Barwood, so as you see, the costs are quite high to purchase a new one. He is looking at a used one, but it's kind of like trying to find a nice used truck. Uh, they're just few and far between, trying to keep the cost down. Trying, he's trying to get us an idea and I just talked to Terry yesterday morning, he's been out of town for three weeks, so.
Would it be worth it to try to, to do a third party in there to, to look at it as well? Because the damage that could be caused to your city vehicles, um, in the event that there's a fire or an issue at my home, um, any of your fire trucks, the clearance that they have, they would hit trees.
What's your address?
Twenty-one fifty-three Living Good Road.
What was yours, sir?
Eighteen forty-four Old Springfield, Allen.
About how long of a section of road have you drive it and getting three tenths of a mile of, of trimming required or a quarter mile or half a mile?
Well, it's, it, it's not all in one stretch, there's a tree here, there's a tree there. If you drive down Lake Road, if you drive down Living Good, you can see exactly where all the leaves have been knocked off of the limb. The bare bark is sticking out.
Uh, no. We've hired two or three services in the past to, to do some of that for us. I'll try to look at it and see what we can get done about it.
We know on Lake has been an issue, Mr. Ken's made it quite aware on Lake Road and that's why we're trying to. I wanted something more long-term, I, I know Pete and him go out with coleslaw and they can only do so much, but the grass got in the way this summer. I know it's been dry, but the grass is still growing.
I guess so, since Mike been on.
Hopefully, they're gonna start slowing down, so if there's something we can get on, but I, I'd like to have a tractor, uh, with a bungee mower and like I said, I'm just trying to get the, the price down and try to find a quality fix, I, I don't want to throw our money away. Uh, so that's why we haven't bought one and as far as hiring a third party.
I wouldn't know what.
I haven't looked into it because of, I was hoping Greenboro was gonna come through, but.
Years past, you know, they're always coming here and doing the, the tree trimming for the city. And like I say, it's been a long time since they've been here and done that.
I just think with the, the new addition of Ridge Top Station as well, would be great for the city. There's gonna be a lot more traffic on both of those roads, Living Good and Lake Road. So I feel like you're gonna have more residents who are running into this issue.
I'm gonna get a hold of a couple of counties and see what they would charge us. We, we used to hire that out all the time and we haven't done it in quite a while.
Thank you.
Can we put in a work order for them to look at that? I know there's a lot to try to get cut, huh?
Are you talking about Josh and, are you talking about them?
Well, Pete, then if you can get some of the horse limbs out there and then let's look into it, might we get by for another.
You did it my fair time, so, I'll be true, try to still work. Oh, good.
That's right.
Um, so while we're talking about Living Good, Johnny couldn't be here tonight. I'm Kathy Meredith and I live on Old Springfield and we also have property on Living Good. And you said that they were promised street lights and fire hydrants several years ago and those still aren't up. Do you have any idea when that's gonna happen? On Living.
Fire hydrants, we have no control of that, that's why it has to be.
Well, the city has to come to order though.
What, what kind of line is that, do they, are those gravity or pressure?
It's all gravity coming that way.
Okay.
We can ask, and we have the order, actually right as the city acquired, uh, and the only reason, they backfitted off of a loop of lakes coming into that new subdivision and going back toward the, but that's, that's a while.
I know, but we're near the fire hydrant.
True.
Hold on.
And, um, right, uh, we have a little rise by our driveway and you can't really see very well when traffic's coming. And it, when it's dark, you really can't see, so somewhere in that little area or down by that curb, they could put a couple of lights if that would be, be helpful. And then, did I, can you say on Old Springfield that they're gonna pave? Do you know when?
Within two weeks.
Okay.
I think two to three weeks.
Um, and we still have a lot of speeders on Old Springfield Highway and the cops have been, you know, doing a better job of controlling that area and trying to slow boats down. But there's a couple of little kids up on the far end that cross that street and it's so dangerous when those cars are going fast.
Last, last, could you repeat that one more time?
Mine?
Yeah.
Eighteen forty-four Old Springfield, Allen.
Uh, I've been overdrawn on, uh.
On Living Good, twenty-one thirty?
Twenty-one thirty?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Top of the day, here.
It's right across from the stone house.
Anybody else want to name a son?
I got two others, fifty-eight, ten, eight, bit frozen, Tony Reeder. Uh, first one was a lady that lives on East End, first house on the left. She's usually here and she asked me about when their East End's gonna be paved, I'm gonna say within two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay. Uh, second thing, I got here a little late, if somebody mentioned a pancake breakfast?
Yeah.
Good, alright. Saturday, the thirty-first, Halloween in the morning. Uh, about all the plate, whole time is all you eat, place your pancake and coffee juice from here.
Seven to eleven.
Seven to eleven. Is it also, uh, we've got the twenty-ninth, to the thirtieth, uh, first grade from Old Togas coming down to school. So Jeff not here, whoever's coming, I need a little help for the sick field, the stadium, eat lunches, the fire off, so. Long y'all memory.
Okay, just to bring you up one more time, as far as the street paving goes. I was, I told today that it should be by, done by the end of October, it might go into the first week of November. And we got Barwood paved over there and they got called out, their equipment is still sitting up at the park in there. Okay, so they do plan on coming back during that time period to do all this finish up on, on, on the paving. Give a bar with the complete paint. So give me three weeks instead of two weeks, please.
Anybody else?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you finished with limits? Are you gonna do any more paving on limits?
No, no more paving on limits, no.
Okay.
No, we're not finished as far as putting all of the ground match up towards the road and so forth, the, from the widening of the intersection. That's still, that still has to be done.
When Lennox needs paving, we are gonna widen that, we've already discussed it, it was just, uh, we've basically stretched our budget to the, Mike, Mike's got every penny he could out of it, got as much paving. That's why we're able to do Springfield Highway and Nelson and I don't think anybody, I'm supposing myself, he, he's really done a great job on that.
It's really nice going into Barwood.
Yes.
Maybe Leo won't have to get out there anymore and help the guys and try to go in and crack the trailers. He goes out there and helps them get them out of the ditch and out of the front yard and, I mean, and so the poor guys didn't have to call a moving company and say, I don't know how to ride this truck. Leo did it, so he would go over there and do what he shouldn't have been doing, but he got them out there.
He's the charge service call, he's gonna make some money on this.
We got open up here for a scoop, so. Anybody else have anything, sir?
The only other thing I have is that I've already assigned everything in the property or the evidence room. I've already signed all that over to Bill and Dave and I will sign every, all the other property, the apartment over to, uh, I guess Assistant Chief. Um, probably Thursday, sometime Thursday or Friday, where he'll have a list of everything that we have and everything will be taken in.
I appreciate you being here, Jeff, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for your years. Make a motion to close the meeting. Honorable say aye.
Aye.